Temperatures.
I like it better than a hundred and five yesterday. Oh.
This time of year, yeah.
This is the time of the year where you get the real exposure.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Are you?
I'll take extra allergy pills last night. I knew this was coming. No, allergies. It's up north. I can't ever move north. Good. Wind blowing to the south. But we get some coming from the north. There's just some pollen that comes with it from the north. I just know if I ever move, I can't go north. But you wouldn't want to.
No, south is the place to go.
Go in.
Good.
Yeah.
Now, I had a friend that he lived, was raised here. He had allergies horrible. Now he lives, works in Dallas. They basically would wait when they were prepared. And I would have never.
It's all seen because if he's in Dallas, it's all concrete and asphalt with no.
He comes back here to send him to his mother.
That's why my youngest daughter lives in Houston. And she comes back here and sometimes her nose will leak because it's so dry.
It's definitely dry right now.
Excuse me. I was doing two. Three.
I was in D. Yeah.
Huh? I told Tara was wanting it and I told her, but then she never did go get it. So if somebody else wants it, go ahead. She was the one asking me and I said, well, I'll find out. Go for it. Because she ain't, and which after her accident, she can't do anything for, she's not been doing anything for a while. She can finally handle those scrub ins without crying. We're getting better. But we're a long way from being healed.
Okay, it's ten o'clock. We'll go ahead and call this meeting in order.
It's me. Our dear heavenly father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to represent the people of Skory County. And we ask that you guide us in our decisions. Lord, we ask that you be with our nation. We need you so bad right now. We ask for a little rain also. We ask these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state under God, one indivisible.
Oh, I say it every time we have a full house. That is about the best sound that you can hear. It's one thousand. I love it. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Okay, at this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. All right, if it's on the agenda item, we'll be getting to that. This is for non-agenda items. Okay. In the, is there somebody that wants to come in?
What was on the agenda item?
I'm sorry?
What was on the agenda item?
County or the hospital district on the?
Yes, yeah. We have, we have A through N on the agenda today. So that's one of the items. All right, presentations and discussion of department head committee and board reports.
I'm staying busy, Judge.
Yes, sir.
I see that we're still about half of the revenue that we used to receive from DPS through our JP. Makes it difficult, but I guess they're all on the board.
Thank goodness. Don't mind that at all.
I'm going to tell Rio at the bridge.
Okay, any more discussion on those? Anybody, one of the boards or department heads want to discuss their? No? Okay. Court, consider approval of previous court minutes. We have several. The first one, July twenty-first. We'll not look at that one. And I think we've already approved that one.
We'd make a motion that we approve the report as presented.
Hold in favor. Court, to discuss and consider interpresent project schedule and staffing.
We're working every day.
Yeah.
Every day.
All right.
Saw the boys this morning. Different wind that was trying to put metal on a building.
Yeah, that's not happening today. Okay. All right, court, consider accepting donations to county entities. We've got donations to the senior center. Eight hundred and seventy fifty dollars, eight hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents, excuse me. Three hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents total.
Yes. I made a motion to accept the donation to the senior citizens center.
All in favor? Okay. Court, consider approval of treasurer's monthly report for August of 2021.
Was there any questions for me as far as personal reports?
You're doing a good job.
My second thought. Thank you.
Um, we're full. The jail and sheriff's office is full. We only have a few open positions, so that's very exciting.
Nice. That is good. Any more questions for Kirsten? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're doing the monthly report and the personnel.
Personnel.
Just make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
There you go. All in favor?
Larry. Turn it down.
That was the last thing I did. I was, I don't usually bring it with me, but I did today. So I had to turn it down. All right, court, to discuss and consider request from Cogta Hospital for funds received from, not actually totally funds. How are you doing, Ellen? Yes, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Summers.
I have one question. Are the COVID relief funds any different from the American Relief Fund?
Yeah, that's a different fund, but we're going to discuss this. It's a, we can make the adjustment. She's got.
First of all, thank you for having me. And I know this is a bit of an easy one for us. Early on, when we knew it was going to be funded coming to the cities and the counties, I had reached out to Dan and was wanting to collaborate with him on a little more. I don't know. But as the summer has gone on and we were affected by the Delta variant and a large demand on the hospital, I now turn to you and ask for funding just for regular efforts. Before I start though, I would really be remiss if I didn't point out what a great community effort I think we've had for the last eighteen months. We have really very much benefited and been a part of the efforts of the school, the county, the city emergency management. I don't want to leave anybody out. The health unit. That itself has been a collaborative effort. In starting out, I guess that I know this is an unusual request to be coming before you, but these are pretty much unusual funds that we're working with. Part of this is predicated, and I think everybody copies of this. This is from the Texas Department of Emergency Management. And it deals with talking about the funds through the American Rescue Plan and the fact that those can be used to support COVID efforts to stop the spread of the disease. The next page talks about the COVID money, which is at a low extent to be able to share with local governments. The third page is a briefing from Texas Hospital Association that refers to the fact that the state, including the governor's office, knows that COVID has placed an undue demand on the hospitals, that there's an extra needed staffing. And again, going back to the fact that we have been actually encouraged to reach out to the city and to the county to ask for assistance from the American Rescue Funds. And then the next page. In general, and many of you already know this, but in general, the American Relief Act funds has two purposes somewhat. One is to combat the negative economic impact of the pandemic, which is ultimately dispelled in prison hospital. And the other is to help the community to continue to fight COVID. So I'm going to present to you in two ways how the hospital fits both of those needs. Number one is a business enterprise, and I detail the number of full-time and part-time employees we have. As our business has grown, the number of employees has grown. I detailed that in 2020, our patient volume and revenue was fifty-six million dollars. In 2019, before COVID, it was sixty-two million dollars. So obviously, we had a big hit just because of COVID and what it started for our business. I also want to lay out for you that in 2020, we received six point three two million dollars worth of property tax receipts, three point six nine million of that was spent for charity and manager care. Something else I thought you might be interested in. A couple of years ago, we commissioned an economic impact study from the A M University. And this might surprise you just to see where does our hospital funding come from? Seventeen to twenty percent of our funding comes from tax receipts from property taxes. Five percent comes from patients and the co-pays they pay to us or their deductibles. Fifty-eight percent comes from insurance companies, twenty percent from Medicare, Medicaid, and federal sources. So the bottom line is, a hospital is a net importer of funds to Skory County. Put another way, for every local dot tax dollar given to us, we provide eight dollars and seventy cents in health services. For every one local dollar, whether it's from co-pays, deductibles, or property taxes, we bring in another three dollars and fifty-four cents from another source into the community. Through the multiplier effect, the hospital contributes seventy-four point one million in output or gross sales and contributes four hundred and one jobs to the local community. So I think we meet the bar of being a business. And I've also shown that we have been impacted negatively by COVID. I thought you also might be interested in the next page because it shows the trend of our property taxes over time. We have made a concerted effort at the hospital to actually decrease our dependence on tax revenue. And you can see from two thousand and nine to where we are now. And part of that is us trying to bring in sources of new revenue. The second part, dealing with Cogta hospitals and our COVID mitigation. I'm not going to read all of this because you know a lot of it. But I think it's pretty substantial that we've given eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-two COVID vaccines in this county. We've completed year-to-date twenty thousand six hundred and fifty-one COVID tests. Most of you are familiar with the new services we've added, like the drive-through screening, curbside services. I saw them outside yesterday in a hundred and five degree heat doing curbside visits outside. One doctor was out there and somehow smiled through the whole process. Telehealth services. A couple of other things, as I started researching this, really stood out to me. In Midland, during the month of August, they talked about the load of COVID on their hospital. And they talked about having eleven COVID inpatients a day. During that same time, Little Cogta Hospital had eight COVID inpatients a day. So I hope you can understand what a real strain this has been and what a load this has been. When proportioned on Midland, eleven inpatients, Cogta eight inpatients. The other thing that we have found, when you compare us to some of the urban centers, our local inpatient volume has been sixty-five to seventy percent COVID patients who are very sick and have a lot of hair. In the urban areas, it's something like nine to fourteen percent. I'm detailing the staffing changes for you. Again, I won't read all of that, but you just know that we've had to bring in extra respiratory therapists to cover nights, days, weekends. We've had extra emergency nurses. We've had to bring in agency nurses. You know, we opened our COVID shift, which is a whole new unit to staff. We've had to hire screeners, support people, people to take blood draws, people to man the phones. So a lot of additional, additional hiring. The next slide is in here just because I'm going to preemptively try to address some of the questions that I've heard. And why doesn't the hospital stop construction and conserve its funds? Has anybody heard that or been in touch? Okay, so here we go. Simply put, we can't afford to stop construction because that construction is not only going to bring us some new services, it's also going to bring us some new money. Once all the changes are in place of the projects that we have going on, after meeting the expenses, after meeting debt service, it's going to bring us five hundred thousand dollars a year in additional money. How many of you think that it would be a good idea for us to turn down five hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue? So we feel very compelled to want to finish construction so we can start these new projects. And at the bottom line, bring in the new money. Part of the reason that we have tried so hard these past few years to find additional revenue sources is because every year, every budget cycle, the supplemental funding that comes from the government is threatened that they're going to stop it. So we have purposely tried to find new sources of revenue. It's not all too just about the revenue, bringing money to the bottom line. It's what services can we bring to this community that don't exist so that people are having a good time for? So let's talk a little bit about the fitness center since that tends to be kind of a point of contention. Not only will it improve the fitness center, but once the fitness center moves and relocates, it's going to open up some valuable floor space in the physical therapy department. In that department, we are now going to be able to offer these services. An autism functional pathway program for children so that we can be an autism center. A cardiac rehabilitation program so that people needing that service don't have to drive to Sweetwater or Colorado City anymore. A pulmonary rehabilitation program, which is really going to be important for patients kind of suffering with post-COVID. A children's PT area and a dedicated space for occupational therapy. The benefits of relocating the specialty clinic. I don't know if you've been in the specialty clinic, but just the ability to have ADA restaurants. Or for those disabled people who come into that clinic not to have to trek down that long hallway just to check in. There'll be a separate waiting room so that if you, if by chance you're immunocompromised, you're not going to be waiting in an area where people might be sick. One of the best things, though, is that one of the most needed services, when we move the specialty clinic in that area and it's vacated, we're going to be putting in adult behavioral health care, which is also a community that I'm going to need to support adults going through grief, the geriatric population, and will create a source of new Medicare funding for us. A few more pages because I know we've got a lot of business. But we do ask for your immediate support of our immediate needs. There's a quote in here from the Texas Department of Emergency Management. There's a quote in here from the Texas Organization of Rural and Community Hospitals, where essentially, when the governor announced that he was not going to flex for additional staffing, that the hospitals could book to cities and counties for financial assistance because they have received COVID money from the Fed. So in essence, I'm here because of what's played out at the federal level or the legislative level. Because I do need to point out to you, so we were well-funded in 2020. We had conserved a little money to get us through the first quarter of this year, and we did so. Our auditors are going to make it go back and book it to last year. But so far this year, we have been awarded the grand total of the promise of four hundred thousand dollars from the federal government. Their quote was essentially, we paid the hospitals last year. Now, they did, that paid us very well, that supported us very well in 2020, but 2020 is over. And what the Delta variant and this year has thrown at us is just, you know, it is pretty hard for us to sort. You can see how our expenses have been affected and we've had to close down areas of the hospital like the surgery programs, so our revenue's been affected. Also, I want you to look at a couple of quotes. This was from the Midland mayor. If someone writes for us as a city to say, how can we help the hospital who has restricted funds? So to think we can help those on the front line. And I would just contend, if the Midland hospitals, you know, Deska hospitals have limited funds, how much more so than Cogta Memorial Hospital? And then the last is an excerpt I did for an online search showing the money, the funds that the city of Deska and the city of Midland have given to their hospital. So this is not without precedent. Is the reason I'm coming to you, part of that again, came from the legislative process in the governor's office and the Texas Department of Emergency Management. How's that for a thumbnail sketch?
Thank you.
If you have any questions, you can have any answer.
Does your website need to be updated since you're showing about seven point three million that was received for 2020 in tax revenue?
We, that, there's a, there's an adjustment. We have not received that amount. That's what we will receive after all payments from May.
In for 2020? For last year?
Yes.
And also, counties are only held to eight percent of the total budget for indigent healthcare. Are y'all not held at that same percentage because you're showing half of the money that you received was in part indigent?
We're not, we're not held at a particular percentage. We're glad you mentioned that because, again, if we weren't doing this, then it's going to fall on the county to do it. But we do program in a way that helps us recruit some supplemental funding at another point. So in other words, it's much to our advantage to have indigent funding for indigent care versus bad debts. Because when you recruit through a form, it's in the year.
I'm going to have a couple of questions for you. First of all, I commend the hospital's employees that, for all the work that has been done. Our health department and EMS, they're right there beside you. We have all seen this and thought this is as hard as possible. And staff is great. Appreciate them, everything that. My experience with them working through all of this, and I've been right there. We've had meetings every week. Stopped those for a while and we started having them again. But they all always had good information and we're always right there for them to help. So I guess, how much, how much of a shortfall are y'all in at this point?
We're not requesting the whole shortfall. And I'm sorry, I should have, I should have been there. We would like to request four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to help with that extra agency staffing.
Okay. Have you submitted a FEMA expedited fork sheet for the funding?
We actually aren't.
Okay.
You know, when we got through the screening, you know, I had, I had made several phone calls to our legislators, you know, to people lobbying, et cetera. Because we could see that we, you know, we, we were going to march or so in April, and then it was going to become drastic. And then things improved, our volume improved, we were kind of getting back to normal, our volumes were growing, and then the Delta variant hit.
So you're working on that application now. They're, they're funding one hundred percent through the end of this month.
Through the end of the month?
Yes, ma'am. I didn't know if you were, that is. Okay, yeah, I was looking at their website today, following up on that. And it's, it states that FEMA will pay one hundred percent federal funding for the costs of response activities that have been determined eligible by FEMA until September thirtieth. So I'd heard that a couple of weeks ago and I mixed the dates up. I thought it was through the end of the year. Verified today that it's through the twentieth, the thirtieth. So I was just curious about that. Now, with that, how much did y'all end up getting in 2020?
I can't give you that. It was a large amount because we got the payroll protection funds. And then we, we had two other sources of funding. And we, we did well. I will tell you this, though. The formula that they used in 2020, it was supposedly to pay us for the offset in revenue or the revenue decline as well as our extra expenses. The funding they sent us did not pay for a hundred percent of that.
Sure.
But we did purposely hold some funding over for 2021, just not knowing what 2021 was going to bring.
Okay. Would ten million dollars be a close estimate?
I'm thinking nine something.
Okay.
But the thing that happened to us with some of the later funding and even the second round of payroll protection money was that if your revenue was not down by twenty-five percent, you weren't eligible for any more hospital funding
Sure.
of payroll protection. Well, for us, that would have been, we would have needed to have been down fifteen million dollars instead of six or seven million.
Sure.
Now, I'm not really sure we were supposed to make that at six or seven million dollars in a community this small. But we weren't eligible for some of those funding streams for that reason.
Okay. Thank you.
But you did receive around nine million last year.
Yes, we did. And I, I need to let you know that there are multiple agencies looking at that information. And in fact, our product has been held because they've got to reconcile each, each of those accounts, each funding source, how the money was spent. And if you ask me in general terms how we spent the money, it was COVID testing, PPE, and just, you know, agency nursing, agency respiratory therapy, and just the cost of staffing. We had to open the new COVID unit. You know, the funds, the funds were spent. And if you actually go by the criteria of the government, we were really underfunded for that. But, you know, we were at the cash flow limit, so it was okay. The problem is, I didn't send nine point three million dollars this year.
Yeah. Just for, just to let everybody know that the American Rescue Plan funds is, that was allocated to Skory County was three point two million. We have received one point six million so far, and that, that was the first payment in May. So.
And I know you're just, I mean, I sympathize with you
Sure.
because you're like all of the public entities, but there's never enough money.
Absolutely.
For what you need.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Okay, Ms. Summers, did you have a question?
I have a question for you.
Okay.
In 2020, did you make use of FEMA nurses or respiratory therapists and all that from FEMA?
There really weren't a lot of FEMA opportunities. Most of those type positions were given to Linda, Abby, and the library.
I think that's been a question people are wondering if, quote unquote, free FEMA nurses, respiratory therapists and stuff were used here.
Well, I'm giving an example in 2029 because you probably saw, and I'm sorry, my timeframes are not even together, but in the last maybe forty-five or sixty days, there was some discussion about the governor adding nurses, you know, bringing twenty-five hundred nurses into the state of Texas. From my understanding, there were seventy-two nurses brought in to be shared between the public and Amarillo for the purpose of opening up more ICU beds. We made requests through the STAR, I don't see anyone in here from Emergency Management, but we requested nurses through the STAR program. Communities our size did not move.
I can attest that through STAR, they were having issues getting nurses this time around, this year. They were, I was talking to Greg the other day about that, that they would get nurses to a location. They would stay for a day or two and then split, go back to where they were, where they were from, so.
This, this one really was different, both, both in terms of how very much the strain was, how fast it moved. Last time, we had, we had the opportunity to gear up, you know, into our response. And pretty much kind of almost answering back to your question. For example, COVID had already gone through the West Coast, it had gone through New York. And it ended, and those nurses redeployed across the, across the country. And so they were able to move to wherever they were needed. And this time, it seemed like everyone needed them at the same time. And so there just weren't extra nurses. And, hi, I'm here. There just weren't extra nurses. One of the things that I think we did extremely well in 2020 was our community planning. I think that was very successful. I think that's one of the things that helped us to really respond well. And the other thing as a hospital is that we made efforts very early on to get those agency nurses, to get extra staffing, to get extra respiratory therapists. So that as soon as possible, we could get back to business as usual. So that as soon as possible, we can get back to business as usual, which is doing our procedures, doing surgeries, bringing people back into the front.
Okay. Is that a question in the back?
I have a question, Ms. Hillary. Considering our current situation, where we're at, how, what's your thoughts about the future or preparedness if we have another operation happening? We were talking about that.
This has been tough. And I'm probably not the one to answer that. So I can tell you, this has taken a toll on people. You know, it, it, we stayed at such a heightened level for so long, just like the health unit, just like the NHS, everybody else. And then in about April or May, we started to relax a little bit, you know, we're going to take vacations, we're going to get some time off. We had a normal month or two, and then July hit. And I will just tell you, our staff is worn out. They're covering extra shifts, we've got night nurses working day shifts, I've got day shifts working in different departments. It's not just the nursing, it's housekeeping, it's dietary, it's the registration.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Judge, can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
My wife and I were hospitalized not quite a year ago, back in the, in the November 1st of December with COVID. Put us in the ICU unit here. I don't know what all was said at the city council meeting, but I can tell you from personal experience, there is not a hospital in the state of Texas where we could have been treated better than we were at Cogville Memorial Hospital. I feel like I should warm up my shirt.
Me too.
From the doctors, and Dr. Evans was our doctor. They, I don't know if you realize it, but there's the, the old old B board that became the COVID ICU unit. And Dr. Evans saw to it that my wife and I were put in the same room. It was a great old big delivery, that is where both of our girls were born. So we got to be in the same room. We, I'll just be honest with you, Hayden knows this, he came in there while we were there, and Jeannie and Angel and Beverly, they know this. My wife and I were about that far from the wall. And I went home, I was still on oxygen for two weeks. I'll just say this, you can spend $400,000 in a lot worse places than you can Cogville Memorial Hospital. From the doctors, the nurses, the phlebotomists, the travel nurses, the respiratory therapists who FEMA, and I, I don't know where that lady was from, but they were all excellent. I know you, you people are the ones that voted on this, but please consider all of that. It's top class.
Sure. Okay. What is, what is the timeline on needing the funds?
I want to take cashier's check. I, I'll let you work through whatever process you need to work through.
Because I have some thoughts about that. You, you're in, in the process of filing with FEMA. Do you know how much, I'm not asking for the amount, but do you know how much you're going to be asking FEMA for that?
No, and I'm also not sure the timeframes that are going to be covered in that.
Okay.
I, let's, let's, I will tell you too, that since making this application, and like, like I said, our first conversations about this were much more interesting than these conversations are because I thought they held more promise for some things we could defer. But as things turned in July and August, and it just became much more heated, and then I've made my request, but in the last 10 days, they have announced that there's going to be some potential hospital funding. Need to tell you that.
Sure.
It won't be, phase four will not be available until December. Which is a long time to wait.
Sure.
And my other concern is, the last time they told us they had $8.5 billion to share between all the great rural hospitals and healthcare entities, we ended up with, I think, 250 or 265,000 dollars. So I don't know how much hope to hold out that even they, though they are going to potentially put some money out, if it's, you know, you can tell the difference. 9.3 million dollars through last year. It allowed us to keep operations, keep our employees, not have to furlough anybody, take care of this community in a much more expanded place and manner than had ever been done before. And compared to the 400,000 we've been promised this year, which is primarily going to be used for testing and vaccines, I don't really need money for testing and vaccines. I need money for payroll costs, for agency nursing, and those added expenses.
Okay. And the reason I asked for the timeline is, on this agenda, I was going to mention that I've put together a committee for the funds. I'm curious to see where that FEMA application goes. How much, how, what their timeline is, that you have until the 30th to file that. So I'd hate to duplicate funds, is, is my thought on that.
If we duplicate funds, then we'll go back to plan A and do our other projects.
I understand.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I seriously want that done. Yes, sir.
Then on the, on this funding, you guys, you said y'all received part of it so far. I think you said something about 1.8 million.
1.6, yes, sir.
Is there a timeframe on what you're, when you have to spend that or allocate it?
It has to be allocated by the end of 2024, and it has to be spent by the end of 2026.
So you all do have some time here. And I assume in your conservative manner, you're going to hold some of these funds back.
Well, so.
I mean, you're not going to try and just give them all out, spend them all upfront? Because just like you say, if she, even if she receives FEMA funding, we don't know, Hayden made a comment, we don't know where this is going, unfortunately. We don't know where our, our great federal government is going at this time, you know? So we don't, the, the uncertain 20% funding that you, what amount are you going to get? And so, I mean, I would, I just, you know, so I'm right to others, but I would, you know, say that, of course, I'm all for us funding anything with Cameron hospitals, I agree with everything everyone said here. And same time, if there's even a question, it might, we may need this money again some next year. And I think we all have projects, like I said, there are projects, there's favorable projects, but I think we all go back to the needs first.
Right.
Needs in the community there. And, and maybe even hold some funds for those needs that we don't know.
Right. Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. And so US Treasury has given what is called interim final guidance. I have never heard a term like interim final guidance. What does it even mean? At the end of this month, maybe, they're hoping by the first, first part of October, they're going to give final, final guidance. So we've been extremely conservative. We've been waiting to find out where exactly we can and cannot spend these funds. We know some for sure. Eligible expenses, this is straight from US Treasury. Support public, public health expenditures. Address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency. Replace lost public sector revenue. Provide premium pay for essential workers. Invest in water, sewer, and broadband, broadband infrastructure. So those are just the broad guidelines. So there's still a lot of questions out there that are getting answered on, on all funds. So we, we have, we put it in fund, let it draw the very little bit of interest that things are gaining now, and just kind of sat back and waited for the final guidance. And that's kind of still where I am now. I want to see where that final guidance is. And now that you have that opportunity of, that you're applying with FEMA, I'd kind of like to see where that goes. I'm not saying no way. I'm not saying yes. I'm saying I need a little more time personally to see where everything ends up, where everything shakes out. I don't know. Yes, sir.
Basically, what I, what I've read and what I've seen and going through the guidelines of the allocation of the money, if you look at all the criteria that they need to come together with for funding, she is 100% correct.
I agree.
And like she said, they don't need to wait around six or eight months or two years or whatever. They need the money now.
I agree.
And, and the thing about it is, all right, looks to me like we have a committee right there. What other kind of committee do you plan? I mean, I'm just curious, okay?
Just, all right, so just to let you know, I'll go ahead and get into the committee. It's the health department head, the EMS head, I've got one commissioner who is a former auditor, I've got the auditor, the treasurer, and I'll be on there. And then one person, Bill Robertson, has agreed to be on the committee. So it's more financial people and more people who understand how to follow these rules or follow the guidelines, all that, and read the guidelines and, and understand where these expenditures go than anything. But I'm just, my thought is, on FEMA, we don't know what they're, what they're willing to fund. Yes, sir.
Are you not going to have somebody from the hospital on it?
Can, yeah.
I'd, we'd like to have a representative from hospital on that committee.
You think Kathy might be willing to do that?
Or John.
Or John? Okay. Either one of those. Yeah. Be glad to have one of those on there. Thank you, Hillary.
And my answer is already being answered. If by the end of the month, you filed for the FEMA, how long will it have to file on for funds?
Those are supposed to come in fairly quickly?
Yeah, it's an expedited application. Yes, ma'am.
But I think it's also a, it may be a percentage if you do the expedited.
Well, it says it's 100% right now through the end of the month. After the end of the month, I think it's a percentage. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So that's, that's why I'm curious about that. I'd like to see if they would.
Sorry, I'm not sure that she had the number or not, but do you know how much it would take to break even this year?
I've got a general.
Ballpark idea?
Like additional money? We had, you and I had carried some money over from, from last year's funding. We tried to hold a little, and there was already not knowing what was going to happen. Our auditors are going to make us go back and book that in 2020. For the first quarter, we're probably down a million dollars. Second quarter, probably down a million dollars. You know, and that comes about, not just because of the expenses in the agency, but because of what happens with things like closing surgery down for a month, closing down service lines. And that's one reason that we made such an effort even before and now to try to get us agency nurses, because if I could bring in the agency nurses, they can care for the COVID patients, and our nurses can go upstairs and be doing infusions and surgeries and bringing us all urine. That's, that's what we haven't been able to do this year because there are no agency nurses.
Hillary, I've got a question for you. With all the people or all the hospital districts, look for agency nurses, how difficult is it for you to acquire that?
Last year, we had really good luck. We, we saw the need, we, we got our name in early. This year, there just aren't as many nurses. Everybody knows them. I've heard about communities offering exorbitant prices for agency nurses, and, and they would, they would pay it, and then, but they can't get them. And I think it's partially because they're needed everywhere. There was a nursing shortage before this happened, and so this is just an accessory that.
Didn't you lose, didn't the nursing industry lose nurses during all of this as well?
They lost some nurses. I think regrettably, you're going to probably lose more. Dr. Morris can probably speak to this better than I can, but our staff is exhausted.
I understand that.
You've got people working in different shifts, different departments. It's, you know, you know how at the end of the day, your family says, how, how was your day? It was horrible. It was awful. And you can't even explain to them either through their privacy or just because if you haven't lived it, you can't understand how really tedious and telling it is when people being just pulled in multiple directions.
It's been stress for 18 months. High stress the whole time. I understand that.
I'll go back to what Hayden said is, you know, we've got to have a little break, we need a little rest because what's the next one going to be, unfortunately? Hopefully not this. Hillary, I, I think it's notable as well, with this variant, are you seeing patients that are more severely ill, requiring longer term treatment in the COVID unit? And then what's the, we're having to hold more patients, correct? Instead of being able to transfer them out? What does that do to expenses and what kind of care are they having to provide? I can't even tell you how, or what levels of liability send out because I, I don't know if anybody has an awareness that the ICU bed market is saturated. It was saturated before the Delta variant came. You know, it's not uncommon when you need, I mean, we know when we need a patient out for a higher level of care, we understand, you know, maybe what their needs are. We'll make 30 phone calls in six states and we can't find an open ICU bed, so what's that transfer? Just, just that alone, what that's done to our staff, because they realize, I know that patient needs to go, but I know they're in my hands and I'm going to have to take care of them. You know, when we started gearing up too for this COVID strain, last time I think I averaged at least 10s for COVID patients, it was maybe six patients. It's been up eight to 11 patients with this strain. People are sick, and they stay longer. It's hitting people harder. It's really hitting the unvaccinated people very, very hard. And it's hitting the younger people, and that's been hard to deal with too, to watch. Having no one situation.
I'm sorry, I, I.
Sure.
The, I, I had talked with the plane D CEO. She was the one I told Hillary about, told me that she was offering $220 an hour for nurses.
Wow.
It's about probably 50 tons of going rate for a nurse. That should be considered if you want Cogville to be able to be prepared if we do face an X wave. Also, I think that that should be considered for, if you want Cogville to be able to maybe reward nurses that are hanging around, because that's tough to turn down money like that. And we, we will lose nurses, and we already have.
And that hospital administrator didn't find nurses at that.
She had four spots at 220 hour, couldn't fill it.
Wow. I, but I, I do think just because of the process, you'll see people who choose no longer to stay in medicine.
Sure.
It's just like, I'm here for retirement.
Sure. Anybody have any questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Why does it matter if she gets FEMA? Why can't she have both?
Well, FEMA is going to fund 100% of what she's asking for here, plus anything else.
They're going to do 100% of what she's asking for.
I'm sorry?
I didn't understand that they were going to do 100% of what she was asking for.
Yes, ma'am. Through the end of this month, they will fund 100%.
And we're asking them obviously for a larger amount.
Right. Did you have a question?
You have, I forgot what it is.
All right. Thank you, Hillary. Appreciate it.
I think you should go ahead and fund her the full 475,000 regardless of what FEMA does, because COVID is here to stay, and they go around to go from, may not do anything.
Sure.
We'd be left high and dry.
Absolutely. But there's limited funds. We're talking, currently, there's 100, 1.6 million dollars right there. That's a third of that. You know, if we do that now, and FEMA has, is going to pay 100% until the end of the month, and we've allocated those funds, plus FEMA's paying that, where are we then with the rest of those funds? If we have to turn around and go through another one, and it eats up the remainder of those funds, I'm just being cautious at this point. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying, let's see what FEMA does first. They're going to pay 100%. Let's see if we get that application.
I understand your caution, but you have to think about how hard and fast COVID hit this community.
I, I, I wish.
You don't have time for caution sometimes. And I think you're, you're trying to push off COVID and you can't.
I am not pushing off COVID. I never have, never will. And I don't know if you've watched the videos that I've done from the beginning on this. And the meetings that we set up with every aid, every, every taxing entity in this county, the health department, the senior center, not senior center, the EMS, the hospital, all of the schools, we've been right in the middle of this with them all along. And so I do understand how big the impact is. And I've, I've watched it and I've, I've seen everything that all of those departments have gone through. I've seen the stress that the EMS, the health department, the doctors, the nurses, all of those have been dealing with. So when you have limited funds coming in, we're not expecting anymore. 3.2 million total. That's it. We got, yes, ma'am, I agree. Yes, ma'am, they are. But you have a question or statement?
What projects are the county expecting to do?
Don't know. That's why I put the committee together.
You don't have any idea?
I don't know for sure yet. I really don't. There are some thoughts, but there's not really anything concrete. There's some ideas, but I'm not really going to, I know there, that there are things that are needed with EMS and the health department, but we, you know, we don't know yet.
And that's, and that's, that's probably true. EMS should. EMS should get money associated to health department, but associated with the hospital.
Okay.
Because without them, you don't have any money.
I understand that.
You know that too.
Is there, is there a way to fund and have an agreement with the hospital? They get a hundred percent FEMA funds to give you the money back?
That would actually have to be a question for the county attorney, I think. That's something that I'd have to ask him and he's not available today. So potentially, yes, ma'am.
You're going to receive another one point something million next year?
Yes, ma'am.
So why can't you spend this, this year and save your one point million next year for your funds?
What if we end up at the same boat next year? Or in three months and we do that?
Good, I don't think there's anything more important in this town than Cogdill Memorial.
I agree, absolutely.
Period. Without the hospital, shut the door, you don't have a town.
You could, yeah, you could say that about EMS or the health department.
Or the health department, too. Absolutely, a welfare. Because they're all important, they all work together.
But there wouldn't be any of those if there wasn't the hospital.
That's right. EMS would be here. And they, they take, they take people from Cogdill, they take two or three trips a day to Lubbock, Abilene. Yeah, they'd be here.
The key though is they take them from Cogdill.
Yeah.
They're jumping.
If you don't have Cogdill, you're not going to have oil companies. You're not going to have stools.
I was on the hospital court, I believe in Cogdill. I am not against Cogdill.
We're hearing that, but we want to do it with some cash flow.
At the same time, you've got to make sure what the federal government is going to allow. And you've got to know their final judgment on what it is. For instance, we've got maybe two thousand, twenty five hundred people in rural areas. Where is medicine going to? Telemedicine. They do not have any broadband at all. They, you, you may live in town and you have it, there's a lady right there that doesn't have Wi-Fi that you can use unless you use your phone. And lots of people don't have any of that. They cannot get telemedicine because they don't have it out there. The federal government has said first and foremost, we can fund broadband so that they are able, those that are shut in out in the country can get telemedicine at their homes. And so there's lots of things that can be done with money. And I'm not saying that Cogdill isn't super important to do that. We just need to make sure before we step out there and then we don't have money. We need to help everybody within this community.
So they're all looking at putting money into broadband and the city is too?
Oh, I don't know about the city.
They're giving two hundred thousand dollars in broadband.
That's what can be done. We know that for sure.
Well, the city has allotted money to do all the engineering work to get broadband. And then at the conclusion of that, they're expecting the funding out and the company to come in and.
Is that broadband for in the city or is it for rural as well?
It's actually broadband fiber for in the city.
In the city. Now, you've got AT&T here, but who can afford $540 a month? Broadband. Very few people. In fact, I think they said they had three that were actually paying that price as our businesses. So telemedicine is super important.
Yes, Ms. Summers?
As far as the deadline being September thirtieth, today, September twenty first, if this court dated to, you can have a special meeting very first part of October to discuss this whole thing again.
How many people die between then? You know, I have lost seven people.
I know, I understand. I understand that very well.
For what?
I understand that very well.
Ella, what's your timeline on needing the funds?
Last week.
She already said she'd take cash.
I, I know, I know, but she didn't say.
She didn't say today?
No, she didn't. Yes, ma'am.
I think if it were one of you or some of your family and this COVID was knocking on your door and you needed a nurse and you didn't have it, I think you would vote on it today.
I agree, I agree, absolutely.
And like she said, this girl back here, sometimes we just can't wait. It's just, you know, wait what?
Do you have a nursing staff, do you have a staff shortage because of not having these funds at right this minute?
No.
No.
The rate limiting factor is finding the nurses that's on.
Okay, so currently, right now, you're staffed appropriately.
They're working all the time.
I understand. I didn't get the numbers yesterday. What were, do you know what the total number of cases are right now in Scurry County? And how many you have in the hospital at this time? Especially with COVID?
We don't, we don't have a way of knowing what the total number of cases are because they're tested elsewhere. I know we just posted yesterday, but the number of testing we've done and how many of those were positive.
Okay.
I think it was down, it was four hundred and something tests. Somebody correct me, eighty maybe positive.
Okay.
Which is about seventeen percent positive. And it's been around twenty to twenty percent.
Okay, how many current COVID cases do you have in the hospital?
I think there are four. This point that I'm aware of, but that number fluctuates widely from day to day.
Okay, I understand.
Keep in mind, when she says we're not short, we, we've shut down the OR.
Sure.
For a month.
No, I understand that, I do, yeah. And that, that actually is part.
That's a shortage.
Right, and that actually is part of the requirements for TDM and FEMA and some of those things as well. I understand that.
And they've also shut down elective surgeries.
Yes, yes, yes.
Which is a big income for the hospital.
I understand that.
And so I've got lots of friends, neighbors, people that work for me that have now gotten the monoclonal antibodies. And that, every one of them had a lot shorter time. In fact, in the hospital, maybe one or two days at the most. Some of them didn't even have to go to the hospital. So do you see that stemming the type?
Sure.
I think I know where this is going.
So this is what I'm hearing. So the monoclonal antibodies are not a magic cure. They are one of the better weapons that we've got at fighting this. As we have seen as a community, people that get the monoclonal antibodies are not necessarily spared from dying of this. While some of your friends may have done well, they may have done quite well without it because most people do. The people that get sick and die may still get sick and die despite it. That's a good poll of all the doctors yesterday, and the reality is that none of us have had a patient that has been vaccinated die. Not one. That's not to say that it won't happen someday or that it can't. But if you're looking for a tool on this, that's the, the best we've got. The Regeneron infusions are useful. They are our second best choice. And they can be used together, which makes an even better option. Sitting around and discussing therapy at the moment probably is a little bit outside the nature of this meeting, but there are, there is an overwhelming use of Regeneron infusions in the state and in several states that are putting a huge strain on the demand. And that as an option in the near future will not, is not guaranteed. The supply is dwindling and it's not an easy thing to make and it's not cheap. So it's an option and I'm glad we have it and I'm glad that it's being used. And it is being used here quite a bit. Got somebody in the hospital right now that's had it and they're still in the hospital. It's not a magic answer, but we'll keep using it.
At what date in their sickness were they treated with that? Was it a early treatment or was it a late treatment? So after seven days or?
So by the recommendations of the manufacturer on the use of Regeneron, because it has been shown in studies to cause problems if it's given at certain points past a certain severity. And because it's probably not useful if you use it very late in the course, after someone's immune system is already responding to COVID and making your own antibodies, it needs to be given early, within the first ten days. And unfortunately, some people within the first ten days will get so sick that they need criteria to be hospitalized and on oxygen. It cannot be given to those people either. As the supply of it drops, the criteria for people getting it may become more restrictive. As the supply was pretty, as we were well stocked initially when this came online, it has been used quite liberally. And unfortunately, that may become a problem down the road. There may just not be enough to go around and the sickest people may have to get it. Thankfully, that's the only rationing question that we're dealing with right now. It's not who gets the ventilator that really needs it or something else. So in the grand scheme of things, we'll keep using it as much as we can. We want to give it to as many people as we think it will help. And we are quite liberal with its use. And the vaccine, while it's not perfect, I think is still probably the best option for most people.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
So let me, let me do something real quick. Let me set this down for now and come back to it here in a few minutes, okay? I have a reason and I'll explain that reason once I get to, through this other part. All right. All right, court consider, discuss and consider setting a date to review applications for airport director and U Center director and the conducting of interviews if needed. And once I get through this part, you'll understand where I'm going, but bear with me. So we, today through the end of the day, end of today is when applications can be received for those two positions. I'd like to do interviews on Friday. If, or not interviews, but review applications on Friday. So, and then hopefully we can do interviews following Tuesday. The reason I'm saying set this aside for now and let me get this is we can also discuss, I, that will give me time to discuss with county attorney whether we could enter into an agreement with the hospital that if they get the FEMA funds, if we were to give them these funds and then the FEMA, FEMA were to give them funds, they would reimburse that fund, the ARPA fund, those funds. Would that be reasonable to? Because I, I.
My only other question would be, yeah, I'm kind of like Dr. Morris, we're, we're just kind of looking to be made whole.
Sure.
You know, to be solid, responsible.
I understand that.
At some point, you know, there's also the matter of not just kind of the other fixtures, it's just for what we've lost in revenue. And it would be helpful at some point if, if that's addressed too, through whatever fund I don't have. Please, we, the federal government, they already have funded, and funded hospitals too.
Sure, and that's something that we've got to look at too, is lost revenue. We, we don't have a full picture of that yet, you know.
That's another good question.
Sure.
Well, if the FEMA reimbursement is less than the four hundred and seventy five thousand.
Then we can address it at that time. But it's, it's an unknown at this point. Right now FEMA is saying, if you get, get your application in by September thirtieth, they will pay, pay one hundred percent of what you asked for. So that's, that's why I want to see what they're going to do. So, but I would also, and, and we would have to get not just county attorney's opinion on it, we'd also have to get the opinion of US Treasury as well. That's, you know, something that we would need to know. Would, would a reimbursement work? So it'd be easy to say, yeah, we can do that. And then we do it and the US Treasury says, no, you need to pay us that four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars back. Who's going to pay it back at that point? Scurry County or the hospital? Who's going to do that? You know, we don't have the funds to do that and we know the hospital doesn't. So, you know, we can't just jump into something just because we have a lot of people that want it. And I, believe me, I want to help as much as I can, but there are certain guidelines that we have to follow. And we don't know what all those guidelines are yet. So that's, that's my reason for hesitating. Yes, ma'am.
If you've missed the one penny of any of those funds, all of it has to be paid back, not just the portion you're talking about.
You're absolutely right.
All of it. So if you miss then, one hundred and seventy five thousand, you have to pay back the three point two. All of it, if you miss then, one penny.
Yeah. So, what do y'all think?
Well, it's difficult.
It is.
Very difficult.
It's a no win, but by the same token, we don't know what the rules are at all. And we ain't got three billion dollars to pay back three million dollars for misspending. And there is no clear guidance yet for how you can spend that money. It's all over the board, you just read it. And they will probably change that before they tell you the right way. And that's not fair to them, it ain't fair to us, it ain't fair to Scurry County. But that's the hoops that we're going to have to jump through to make sure we all get to keep the money. Because like, you know, say it, one dollar, they call for all of it back. We've done enough grants, they're all that way. It just, like I said, it's horrible, but that's the way our world works these days, which is not right. But we have to work out for everyone. Is my opinion.
I thought the roads were right here.
What do you have, a letter?
That's frequently asked questions about who's eligible for it and who is not.
If you'll go to the US Treasury website, they have their interim final guidance listed there. It is seventy some odd pages long. That's, that's where the rules are. And they have their list of frequently asked questions on there. National Association of Counties had over two hundred and twenty questions that they asked and they're still waiting on answers on some of those, just for eligibility to spend those funds.
So they give you money ahead of time?
Yes, ma'am.
Or tell you what you can, can't do with it?
Yes, ma'am.
Most of the time.
Yes, ma'am. Go, go to the US Treasury and, and look at, look at their website and it'll, it'll explain. They tell you, they tell you you can spend it, they tell you you can spend it, but they're, they're, they, they put it out so fast that their guidelines, when they put those, the guidelines came out after the money. And that's the interim guidelines. And we're still waiting for the final guidelines, which we're hearing would, should be at the end of this month or beginning of October.
Or January or whenever they have to.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, just give us the money and we'll go with you wherever you got to go to.
Okay, all right, and then Scurry County's on the hook for three point two million dollars.
Okay, we'll go.
Then we have to raise the tax rate to cover that three point two.
We may not have to pay unless we all go.
Because we'll all end up.
Kind of jumped the gun on their allocation?
They may have, I don't know. I can't say whether they have or not.
They might reserve it before they spent, uh, uh, awarded them millions of dollars.
Odessa had, I don't know if they did or not. I, I'm not going to speak for Odessa. I'm speaking for Scurry County, you know. Odessa has a much larger tax base than we do, you know.
We have a true concern that giving money to the hospital would be outside the guidelines. Do you truly believe that? Now, wherever it's spent within the hospital, would it be?
I don't, not, not a true feeling that. I don't, not, not a true feeling that giving money to the hospital would be a problem. No, that, that is not my concern. My concern is we were discussing, we had, someone mentioned FEMA giving money. We give the money to the hospital, FEMA reimburses the 100%, and then they reimburse that ARPA fund. All right. And so I don't know what the rules are on that. That's where I have concerns. And like I said, I'd hate to-
So I just try and give it to them and then you won't have to worry about reimbursement.
Sorry, excuse me, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So are you saying that whoever receives these funds should not receive funds from other sources as well?
No, ma'am. I'm not. I'm not saying that at all. But if FEMA was going to pay 100% of what she's asking for, why spend money that we don't have to have allocated until 2024? Because we don't know where the future's, where, what, what's coming up in the future with these. There could be other variants. I'm hearing of another variant that's hit Dallas in the last month. What's that gonna-
It should be here.
Sure it is. Exactly. But if we allocate all those funds now, what funds do we have to fall back on at that time? If FEMA's going to pay 100%, let FEMA pay the 100%. Let the federal dollars do that.
Is FEMA generally good for their word?
That's why I want to wait just a minute and see if they are. See if they are-
We might get $10 from them.
We've got 10 minutes.
Sure. Then we come back and, and reevaluate the whole situation. That's just my thought. But there are four others up here who can-
I think we, I think we need to, to not make a quick decision. We need to study it and, and appoint a board, like you said, so that everybody has some input into it, into what we can, and maybe wait for a final, final, depending on how long that takes.
How many people die?
We've got people die.
I understand that.
Every week.
And we'll remember that, have next election.
More than one. Well, that will be another election, yeah.
I appreciate you all taking the time to hear everyone. I think everyone, this town is grieving. I think everyone has an anger as part of that grief. And I want to remind everyone that, no, it's, it's not helpful. At the end of the day, when all is said and done, any money that the hospital gets is going to probably be pretty well spent and probably be a drop in the bucket compared to what we need when all of this is said and done. So we'll keep taking care of patients. And the bigger picture, what is killing people unfortunately is not just dollars. We can't buy our way out of this tragedy. And as a taxpayer, I really appreciate you all being good stewards of our tax money and our grants and spending it wisely and considering all the other things that we need to. The hospital does need money. They need a lot more than this. And they're going to get it from every source that they can. And I really appreciate you all taking the time to hear this, these arguments, because I feel like most of the people here are here as a result of the city meeting that seemed to be steeped a bit in, quite frankly, ignorance from what most of us have seen. So I appreciate you all taking the time to hear our arguments. And if there's any questions about the medical side of this, this seems to be causing some controversy. I'm happy to discuss that individually with anyone that asks questions as you go through this process of trying to decide where the funds go.
Thank you, Doctor Morris. Ms. Summers?
I kind of do not appreciate him saying ignorance as far as on part of the city. I understand that meeting went badly with Mrs. Helm. But they're not ignorant in the way that they're going through their process of figuring out what we're just doing over there. You just call them ignorant.
My concern is they don't know what they were talking there.
There's a difference.
Okay, let's, let's, let's back off that. This is not about the city at this point.
I'd like to, in connection with Court, I'd like to echo what Dr. Morris did. I don't believe, I believe that the Lord's going to thank the people he's going to take in there. Just thank God we can do that. We need to be ready in season and out season for that. Bible's pretty clear on that. Dr. Morris and his staff I work with every day when it comes to transferring patients out, transferring patients in. We have $3 million or whatever that's coming in to benefit all of us, the health unit, EMS, the hospital, broadband, whatever in the world it's supposed to come to. But I'm going to tell you that we do need to be cautious how we spend the money. We do need to look at all the avenues and how we spend it. We got $29,000 from HHS in April of 2020. I'm still working on that report to justify it so that we can still keep that money. I know that Ella Rae and John were tirelessly trying to keep the funds that they received from HHS and tranche four, or I think that's, I call it tranche four, stage four, that HHS is putting out that we'll receive from all hospitals and providers coming up in December that Ella Rae alluded to. So yes, we all need the money. I'm 800,000 short in EMS right now. I spent a little over 200,000 in supplies, added six people, my staff just to make the 3.2. This community is hurting. I agree with this community is hurting. I'm hurting, my staff's hurting. We don't get paid, have to pay extra pay to do our jobs. We just don't. We show up and lift up heavy people. We take care of COVID patients in a box that's confined, that does have, not have negative pressure rooms, and then we take it home to our families. So I get it. And I echo Dr. Morris in saying be cautious with this money. There is no free government handout. And if you put together this board and you have a community member and you have members on the board, I promise you, as a community servant, the past 14 years in this community, we will do what's best for this community with that money. And we will do what's best for patients that we serve, the ambulance serves, the health unit serves, and our hospital serves for the benefit of the community. Because we all live here, we breathe the same air that we all breathe, and we fight for the lives of our patients.
Thank you, Jason. And thank you, Dr. Morris. I appreciate everybody coming in here and, and expressing your opinions and your thoughts. Not taking this lightly at all. And, and I know each of these are not taking this lightly at all. It's a very serious matter. We're all in a situation that is not good as far as financials go. And, and it could seriously impact all of the entities that are here in this county, especially the hospitals in the county, since we provide, the hospital provides medical care and we provide medical care as well. I haven't gotten into, Jason, I, I wasn't going to get into EMS or the Health Department and their expenses because I don't know the full picture yet. Don't think any of us know the full picture yet. We're still in the middle of it. We've done what we could, as we could, keeping things in line, money in line. This $3.2 million, that's not going to go very far at all. I mean, within the first week, I had several come with their hands out. We still didn't know where we could spend that money at that time. We just found out that we were getting it. At this time, we still don't know directly what all we can do. We know there are certain things like hospital, yes, we could do.
The health unit.
And, and-
The health unit and the EMS.
And the EMS, medical. We can do that. And broadband, that's specifically in there. I'm not thinking much about broadband at this point because the state just put together a broadband office. There's federal dollars coming down for broadband. I'm pulled up on broadband. I want to wait and see where that goes. So that's not even in the picture to me with these funds. We don't have any water and sewer that, other than the Herneley Water System, that these funds, which is specifically states water, sewer, broadband. Not concerned about that. I'm concerned about the healthcare. And, and that's my main thought process in these funds. And like I said, $3.2 million's not very much money at all. You know, our, our budget's quite a bit more than that. Hospitals is a whole lot more than that. So I've been cautious. I want to continue to be cautious. I want to see what FEMA will do. That's my thought process on this right now. You may disagree with me, and that's okay. I hope we can all have disagreements and continue to have dialogue. The reason I put the, put the committee together is so that it's not pointed at any one person making the decision. The committee is formed with people that know this community and have served this community for a long time. And will continue to serve this community. So I'm more than happy, if you would, Ella, please let me know who will be on the committee with me, and I'll let you know the first time we have a meeting. Please stay in touch with me on the FEMA application.
I really want to, I have to close this one thing, and I don't want to be repetitive, but-
No, ma'am.
I, I think one of the best, if there is something good to come out of COVID this last year, I would hope and think that the people in Scurry County should be very, very proud of how the entities have held together. And if we had not done so, I, I don't know how many would have ended up, but-
I agree.
I, I don't, I don't think people are often aware of really how much legality there is, how much collaboration there is, and how much support all the entities have had. Again, everything from the school system, emergency management, they helped even EMS, the hospital, I may not keep you long on, but I think that has been a real strength for Scurry County. I very appreciate you for that.
Yes, ma'am. I agree. Thank you.
So can I just ask, I'm sorry. Most of you don't know me. I'm Andrea Martini. I'm on the Cogo Memorial Board Hospital, uh, the hospital board. I'm also on the Finance Committee. I'm an accountant. I run the accounting department of Patterson DTI Management Services. So I'm a numbers gal. I'm a timeline gal. So we will have a meeting at the end of this month. And I'm just curious, as far as the timeline goes, we will be reviewing finances. We'd like to know maybe what, what to expect in the near future. What does this committee look like? When will their decisions be made? How soon after we hear back from FEMA, can we get a special meeting together if need be, that kind of thing?
Sure. What I'm, what I was hoping that is that, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to have a meeting Friday, this Friday, to discuss applications for two departments. That's why I brought that up earlier. I can also add on the agenda a, a portion to discuss whether we can go forward, whether if FEMA funds, or if we fund and then FEMA funds, then can the hospital reimburse that fund back? I'm hoping to have an answer by Friday on that aspect of it. I'm hoping that the first meeting for the committee will be sometime next week and that we can start discussing that.
Should potentially consider using that funding for another round, will expense not cover back in my plans like that?
Sure. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. So I'm hoping that this timeline will be, of course, we still want to wait for final guidance on some things. So until we know anything from US Treasury, until we have a full picture from them, I'm still not 100% sure. Yeah, I, I know the hospital. I, I have no doubts that the hospital could be funded with this. But other portions of it, I for sure want to know what US Treasury is going to say. So I'm hoping to start the process soon, within the next week.
So you want a table till Friday? Or are you just going to put on a new agenda?
Put it on a new agenda. Take no action if you, unless there's a motion of any type. And just take no action and I can put a new agenda.
I just want to say that the hospital is super important. They're going to doubt about that. And we want to do whatever we can to make sure that our hospital stays viable. I was on the hospital board for nearly five years, and I know how viable that it is, especially whenever you've got a, an aging community that we're dealing with. These, just like my mom's 93, and she needed to go see her cardiologist in Lubbock, but she didn't feel like she could make the ride. And so we went to our general practitioner, Dr. Morrison, and he continues to allow her to get medications that the cardiologist, first of all in Lubbock, that he had sent her to, had given her. And so with that, she didn't have to go to Lubbock. And I'm proud of that. I'm proud that we have a place that our aging community, for various reasons, can't make it to. And so I, I do appreciate every one of you and thank you for coming. And thank you for voicing your opinions and, and your feelings. We do have high, very high feelings about this, no doubt. And we want to do what we can do as soon as we can do and not lose that funding in any form or fashion because we made a, a quick decision that hurt our community. Because none of us have $3.2 million that we're going to be able to recoup if the federal government, and they will. It's like sales tax that we receive from the state. We got $2 million more than what we were supposed to. They sent it to us. They gave us the check, told it, told us it was ironed. And next year, they forced us to send it back to them, which hurt us. Whenever you've already got a budget set and they tell you you're going to send back $2 million, but you don't have it, it's impossible to get ahead again for a very long time. And so we want to be sure that our federal government and our guidelines are known. And so I, I do appreciate everything you all have done. And thank you for caring about our community and our hospital, our health unit, our EMS, our welfare department that serves underutilized folks in the community, our poor people, those that can't get prescriptions because they can't afford them. And so there's, there's lots of avenues here. Let's make sure that we've crossed our teeth, dotted our i's, and that we are going to keep the money. So thank you.
Judge, can I say one last thing?
Yes, sir.
Because I remember this one.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly.
Six months or so ago, I was visiting with a doctor in Big Springs because we don't have a podiatrist here, Dr. DeMiguel DeBrancio. And he complimented our hospital. At the same time, he was not complimenting scenic mountain in Big Springs. He said, y'all got the best deal, now I'm paraphrasing, but he said, y'all got the best deal going. He said, make sure you don't ever become a part of hospital corporation. You know, where, where you're told what to do from somebody in Temple or Houston or Washington or wherever. He was very complimentary, not just of our hospital unit, but he mentioned several individual doctors that he had worked with. So for what that's worth, let that help influence your decision.
Mr. Lilly, thank you, Ms. Lilly. Okay. Any more thoughts or comments? Thank you. I do appreciate everybody being here. We are taking this seriously and we will come to an answer pretty quick. I'm going to make those calls this afternoon and see what I can find out. So I have some information for Friday's meeting. Thank you. All right, Court, consider certification of additional revenues in the form of supplement payments from TAC for MVH government claim on multiple buildings due to hail damage.
We received a check for the hail damage on the roofs, all of the different roofs that we had. It was $1.1,247,295.33 to repair the roof damage on the courthouse. And there is multiple buildings.
Multiple buildings.
There's a long list of, of, make extensive damage from that hail.
We'll get into those bids here in a bit.
We, we appreciate all the money that is sent to us from our bids and from the supply chain being broken. And as everyone here knows, everything has gone up and there's nobody that can actually say what the final cost of that's going to be because until you buy the material, you don't know. And so our bid, our lowest bid out of three came in at a lot less, I mean, a lot more than what this money is that we're being given. But we always like to have money. So we'll take what they give us to start with and then hopefully they will pay for the additional amount since we have cost replacement insurance. Make a motion that we accept the money.
Second. All in favor? All in favor. All right, Court, consider certification of additional revenues in the form of a revenue of revenue from a refund on CCTV system from Intertel paid in 2018. I'll be able to spit it out in a minute. So this was funds that came from when we were going to put cameras up at the library and at the senior center. Once they got going, they said, "Oh, you need $7,000 more equipment, either location." Didn't like the way they did that, so asked them for a refund on the remainder, and that's what that is.
I take it. I make a motion that we accept the reimbursement of funds from CCTV.
All in favor. All right, let's discuss this inter-local agreement with Scory County EMS and Coggo Hospital. This is for when EMS staff, which they've done recently over the last year and a half, are working at the hospital to help supplement their staff. Any thoughts on that, Ella or Jason?
I just asked that it would be renewed every year, so Ella and Ray, I don't have to remember doing it. I think all his opinions have been there.
Okay.
They just come out of the same pot, right?
Yes. Right.
Hospital, I say county, hold. City, county, and hospital, they're all tax revenues, and where taxes are coming in, supply is supply. We can help, we can help.
Right.
We appreciate your help when we need it. You know, they're a great place for them. I do want to clarify this, just to make sure everybody has this understanding. There are certain EMS people who apply for and work for the hospital on an occasional periodic basis. We pay them, that's separate.
Correct.
This agreement is talking about when we would use people on your, on the county's time, and my offer to you is we will reimburse you for their salary and for the cost of those benefits.
Okay.
And that you could send that bill to us for that cost, and people pay you.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to the inter-local agreement between EMS and Coggo.
Second. All in favor. Okay. All right, so this one, County Judge, make appointments to Committee for Recommendations to the Commissioners' Court for the Utilization of the American Rescue Plan Funds. As I've said, want to make sure that the money is spent appropriately. The committee members would be myself, Ms. Cockrell, Angela Sanchez, the auditor, Kirsty Kinnicki, the treasurer, Jason Tyler with EMS, Dana Hartman with Health Department, Bill Robertson as a community member, and a member from Coggo Hospital, as yet to be determined.
Judge, I think it's a great idea. I appreciate you looking at it this way, and hopefully come to a good understanding of how to spend this money, so we can keep it. And so I'd make a motion that we appoint these people that you spoke of to a committee, including the one from Coggo Memorial Hospital, whenever that's determined, and to help them, for them to be able to come to us with a, some type of understanding of how the best way to spend the money.
All right, second. All in favor. Thank you. Court, discuss and consider changes to the personnel policy, adding a second paragraph to Section 7.01 Medical Insurance. This is keeping us in line with the policy that we have with TAC. It's basically putting us in line with them, and it basically explains that if a spouse has coverage under another medical insurance, that's going to be their primary plan. Scory County's would be a secondary plan. So anything further on that that you'd like to?
This is not new to our TAC contract, it's always been there. This just came up with our conversation with TAC. Insurance costs are increasingly to rise, and it's something that TAC is now enforcing. Therefore, we need to make sure that we have a policy to match.
I'd make a motion that we add the paragraph to the second paragraph to Section 7.01 of the medical insurance.
All in favor. Court, discuss and consider going out for bids for grade four Seal Coat Rock.
Judge, we did this previously with Sand Hill, and they misread the specifications and the time allotted to get the bids in, so that's why I didn't show up. I did contact them. We do need the materials that they have. It's very difficult to get Seal Coat Rock this time. Everybody with, from the solar projects to the wind projects have taken it. Supply chain broken again. We have grant money that we can spend to redo our county roads, and without materials, we can't do that. And so I'll make a request that we go out, make a motion to go out for bids again, and I will remind him of the date.
What is the date to open bids? When do you want to open bids?
And so that would be, and what I said to, whenever I was asked this by Cynthia, was as soon as we could after the last time that the notice could be put in the paper. And I didn't know what exactly her timeline was on that. So I'm assuming it could be put in the paper tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
And Saturday?
And Saturday.
Is that correct?
Saturday.
Not tomorrow?
Probably not.
Okay.
So maybe Saturday and next Wednesday? Okay, so then we would open at the next court meeting?
The 5th.
Okay.
Okay.
So that would work, October the 5th.
And that's part of your?
That's my motion.
All right, all in favor.
We got to have it.
Yes, we did.
Carefully.
Yes, you know how to do it. I can make it again if you need me to.
I got it.
I don't think you can make it again authentically.
All right, let me go back down to Court to discuss and consider setting a date to review applications for Airport Director and Youth Center Director, and conducting of interviews as needed. Would you like to do an executive session Friday to discuss the applications for those positions? And I'll make that motion. All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you, ladies, we appreciate every one of you.
Thank you for the work you did.
Thank you. Your motion was to put on agenda Friday for that?
Yes, ma'am.
I wonder why the guys didn't come.
And we will...
Those who self-dead all the work.
Seventy-two hours.
Yes, I'm going to set it for 1:30. Make it 2:00.
Friday.
Friday.
State hears that long.
When? No, I just, we need time to type it up. Want to be sure, type it up and get it out, I want to be sure. Thank you, appreciate y'all. All right, Court, discuss and consider bid proposals for roof work on hail damaged roofs within the county. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you.
I did want to say something else, this may not be the time, but I did want to say this. Last week, we lost three nurses.
They were afraid.
But can I continue to their families?
I understand that.
And see patients pass? So please take it into consideration, we need them out.
We sure will. All right, so we have received three bids for roofing materials. They did say this is not over, that come wintertime, there will be other buildings that will come up, because they have spots that will expand and contract and cause problems.
That'd be on the sprayed on type, like the boys' club, girls' club.
I think the library also mentioned.
I thought they had the same type of roof that we have here. I thought it was the built up rather than the sprayed on.
I don't know, I just remember him saying that that one would be an issue.
I think he was talking about it didn't get touched, but maybe not.
I thought I might have misunderstood.
I know the library and the large hangar up there would have the sprayed on.
Yeah.
For sure.
That hangar get hit?
I didn't hear you talk about that. Saying it did not.
Okay. That's a strange line that came down.
We didn't get any, I mean, we got little bitty hail, but no damage to anything.
Wow. Colonial Hill just got a new roof, the school, I think.
I know.
Yeah, so that's...
And we live a block over.
Yeah, right across the road, it didn't do anything though. Wow.
It was crazy.
That is crazy. Okay, any thoughts, discussion on the bids?
We've got, we want to look at those.
Yeah, yeah. You should have a copy.
Of course, I've already seen them.
Yeah. There's a whole packet of discussion in there on it, and they got, the insurance payment was 1.2 million, they're saying closer to 2 million. So they'll figure that out as they go along.
The best thing about it is that the company that actually did our roof work in 2006, I believe it was, or '07, is actually the one that the lowest bid. They did a great job.
Apparently it wasn't hail proof.
Sorry.
Apparently it wasn't hail proof.
Well, it's four inch hail proof. This was a little larger than that.
Lasted quite a while, actually.
Yes. This hail had stalactites on it.
It did, it was like...
It was crazy.
Sharp. Yeah, really. Yeah, we lost our, I was at my sister's, lost the windshield on our truck, and it was coming down with spots.
I was out mowing, and it was coming down in daylight. I thought somebody throwing rocks at me.
Could have been.
Yeah, that could have been, that's true, but it was icy, if they were.
They had cold heart.
Yeah.
Might as well take the lowest bid, because we have that protection from 1.2 to, if it does cost 2 million.
Yes.
They had to make it up, so apparently they done a good job last time.
And the low one was closer to 2 million, the others were higher than that.
Yep. Because even after they get it done, there's still that clause in there if something else shows up. Might have to cover the, you know.
Right.
Okay, I got in the motion that we take the lowest bid, which is from CS, and that we allow them to do the work as they get the materials back.
All in favor.
Is this the lowest bid?
CS?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, okay. I probably have it in.
All right, Court, to consider resolution to nominate members to the Appraisal District Board of Directors, so...
For me, it's Lou Fred Ross, for a precinct one, and for the county.
There are two that will no longer be on the board, Jay Waller and Mike Carey.
He's been on there quite a long time, and he's done a really good job.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Second motion.
All in favor. All right, Court, to discuss and consider road repair policy in connection with the sale of Hamley Water Works, so...
I can jump out here for a minute and...
Good though, you're getting the mood to do this, Bill.
I'm seeing the Netflix stuff there. That's quite amazing to see. Yeah. So the discussion that last time was about some of the roads in the streets. That's hard to tell which ones are in the streets.
It sure is.
This one? Hard to read, but it does show. It does, it's more accurate. So the brand on advantage are, I think that was for later expansion. I don't think it's current. But you can see there are some right here that looks to be in the street. Most of them, it appears, are in the right of way. There are still some that are going to be down the local streets. So some cross the street, some, well, the majority of them are going to be in the right of way, but it looks like some of them are not going to be in the street, and I think the lowest one is done anyway, is that right?
Yeah.
Couple of ways to do it on those is having a good one to put in the right of way if they're going to replace it. Done anywhere again, there are just a couple of connections, it looks like, and this was all done by Jackie Diamond, so he did run all those connections for the line. It only crosses 84 in one area. Oh, I'm looking at this, yeah, it's right there.
Yeah.
And then it goes along the side of the road. And then it just, are those in the right of way on that side?
Uh, no, that's, no, they're in the right of.
They're in the day traffic, yeah. But listen, it's like they made a direct.
Oh, they're, Jackie just put them in there, that's where we quit.
Well, one of the suggestions made by the county attorney was leave it to the precinct full commissioner to make the determination on how those would be done, or get a policy on what they're going to do, or whether they're going to replace them in the right of way, or bring the roads back to...
I'd say replace them in the right of, I mean...
Do you want, you're a precinct four, do you want the future commissioners to be able to make that determination, or do you want a policy?
I wish policy.
Going to be in, going to be in the precinct four budget to deal with it, so if you'd rather the precinct four commissioner to deal with it, then you don't need a policy. Is that your understanding there?
Right.
On the county, I mean, on the county attorney?
Well, yeah, but it would need to be a policy that stated.
Oh, they still need a policy.
Yeah.
Always got to be a policy for a policy. Make a motion, we create a policy to have the precinct four commissioner, whoever that is, have final say on Hamley Water Works, water lines, rightways.
Good with that?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Easily.
That's the best time to make decisions.
Of course, it goes under 84.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It'd be 84, you went under the level 84, business 84. I guess that's in the, the right, uh, the...
Oh, so you're saying he didn't cross regular US 84, he only crossed business?
Yeah.
Crossed the whole thing?
Both of them, and business 84, I wouldn't even want to cross business 84, but...
Do you remember what the requirements were from the state? Did you have to use a pipe, was it a pipe? Was it a solid pipe to use internally, steel pipe? Within steel pipe? Is that right?
Well, if you're, if you're leaving with any luck, you'll have to deal with it.
But that was because it's business 84, I mean, 84.
Is it in the bardees or? Where do you do it?
No, that's not it. What are you trying to find?
I mean, all were vice wants to come up in. So that's business, I mean, that's U S eighty-four?
Neither way.
That's eighty-four, it's just upside down.
Yeah, because there's your, there's your county road making the S.
Yeah, okay.
Four sixty-six or four sixty-five. And so is it in the ditch? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
After it crosses eighty-four, does it go in the ditch?
No.
It's like right in the middle of the road, or it's in the, well, it could be in the ditch, I guess. Part of that. They're on, down the street.
It shouldn't be, uh, bardees.
Yeah, it's like it does, but.
Yeah.
Other than right here.
Yeah. And then T's, like we was talking about last time?
Yeah.
Court, consider line item transfers and budget amendments.
There's only one budget amendment, and I think that she had it attached to the back of the revenue certification. That's where I found it in my pocket for the, the C C T V revenue certification. I think she attached it to the back of that.
There it is.
Yeah. It was to put that money from the C C T V reimbursement, sixteen hundred and eighty in to the library equipment, a thousand to five thousand, and sixteen eighty in the senior center equipment, a thousand to five thousand, to cover the C C T V system that was ordered by R I T.
Yeah, we were able to get two for less than the price of one. That's the only budget amendment?
That's the only budget amendment. Do you have a question?
Hold on for a second. Okay.
There are several line item transfers. First one, county judge into education, two thousand out of equipment. There was just a shortage in the line. There was more schools because of everything.
Yes.
And the next one is commissioners' court into bidding and notices, two thousand out of the commissioner one and commissioner four education and training line. Next is senior center, a thousand into maintenance repair miscellaneous out of auto expense. She replaced a garter's disposal. Sorry, I put mine in departmental order. They weren't in departmental order in the pocket, so.
I'll make a note of that.
Yes, that makes it lots easier.
You're gonna have to send me your departmental order.
The next one is parks, pool supplies, sixteen ninety-four eighty-two. Why did, where did Larry left? Why do you put pennies in the ditch? Auto swimming pool salaries, pennies. Extension office, office supplies, seven hundred, extension agent dues, a hundred and sixty, and F C S demonstration, four hundred, all out of maintenance, repair miscellaneous. And then precinct two, road and bridge, so you did pennies too. You know.
Come back and ask me where that came from. I can tell you.
Seventy thirty-four twenty-eight, out of maintenance and repair into operators was. Precinct four, the first one, seven thousand into repairs out of fuel and oil, and then another precinct four, nine thousand into tires and tubes out of part-time. I think that's it. I think I gave you a copy instead of the original of that budget amendment one, because here's the original budget amendment.
Oh, okay.
I need the copy back.
You need the copy.
And budget amendment.
All right, all in favor? All right, Court, consider accounts payable.
Total accounts payable, seven hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty, fifty-seven cents, and an additional twenty-one thousand, four eleven forty-eight for the credit card as soon as we get all of the remainder of those back.
Can you get my name taken off of that hill?
I can try, but I've been trying for six years.
Lots of tries, yes.
We play the bill.
All in favor? And last but not least. You want to stay here?
Just like. Just sit here all afternoon? Do you have an original on the, interlocal, or do you need to sign this one?
I'll sign that one, yeah.